Under what roles, ten?
Yeah.
Citizen's statements, yeah.
Okay. No, I don't think he had something to do with it. I'm not sure. See, it might be late. Okay. North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority in town council meeting is called to order at seven oh seven P. M. We'll start with a salute to the flag.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You need more time, I'll ask him for more time.
I need, I'm gonna need a motion for, uh... Oh, roll call, Michelle.
Mayor Viglione.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Duty.
Here.
Councilor Fawnin.
Here.
Councilor Gold.
Here.
Councilor Paternoster. And Councilor Felicia.
Here.
All right, I'm gonna need a motion for the minutes of the last meeting, I think that was December third.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December third, two thousand nineteen, for Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council.
Second.
Michelle, Councilman Duty made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Ang- Angeloni. Uh, any, is there any corrections? No. Roll call.
Mayor Viglione.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Gold.
Yes.
Councilor Felicia.
Yes.
Oh, by the way, that was for the WPCA and Town Council minutes for December third. Uh, we'll go into Water Pollution Control Authority agenda. Correspondence and citizen's statements. Nothing. We'll go into unfinished business, RWA sewer flows from Lake Alard Water Treatment Plant. Nothing.
No, it's Kurt has to present that.
I think you wanted to go over the executive, uh, cable ad and come back after the executive session.
Okay. Okay. Uh, new business, none. Citizen's statements and petitions. And we can go into the regular town council meeting. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions, Economic Development Commission.
Um, the EDC met last night, they had a presentation from Rex, uh, just, I think it was on the two thousand, all the data that they gave us was in regards to two thousand and eighteen, which I believe they're going to share the slides with, um, PowerPoint presentation with Roger Salway. That was the first part of their meeting, and then the big thing that's coming up is the State of the Town, um, breakfast, which will be on January twenty first at eight A. M. here in Town Council chambers. Council members will be getting an invitation to that also. And they also have been, um, developing a contact list of emails of businesses in town, and so they are going to invite a number of businesses in town to attend to that. And I forgot who the speaker is for the breakfast that day.
It's the commissioner, new commissioner.
The new commissioner.
For the Department of Economic Community Development.
Okay, so it's the new commissioner of EDC for the state, and also Mike Paulus will be speaking at that. And they are also in the process of putting together a new program for the, um, very small businesses in town that don't necessarily benefit from the programs that the state has out there or other organizations. It's, they, um, don't have an exact name for it yet, but it's kind of on the premise of paying it forward and having people with knowledge in certain areas, starting off with one business, seeing how they can help them, and then moving forward to other, um, businesses. And, um, I believe they said their first business that they're going to be working with is Totaka Times. So, then the expertise that they have from there and, um, the idea is that businessperson would stay on board and help the next business. So, it's a new program they're putting together, and they're still drawing up kind of a business plan for it. But they have been very active, um, in doing things and putting things together for, uh, the EDC, for the town.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Parks and Rec.
Um, I, their last meeting was the beginning of December, which I could not attend, um, but they will, their next meeting is, um, the fourth Tuesday of this month, they will be meeting.
Okay. Uh, Police Commission.
Next Police Commission meeting is January thirteenth, next Monday.
Uh, next is Fire Commission.
Um, so Mayor Viglione and I attended the last Fire Commission meeting. Um, I think there's two things to note. One is, um, they have some expenses coming up. I guess OSHA requires every seven years that the tires be replaced on the vehicles. And I guess the way they've been doing it, it's timed out so that like, all the vehicles are due at once. Um, so just giving the council a heads up on that. And then I thought it was interesting, too, they're testing out a new radio system between the Fire Department, Police Department, and, uh, Public Works. Uh, it's a state-run system. We would only be responsible if, if we did decide to upgrade to it, because the radio system we have now is an old analog system. So, if we did upgrade to this, uh, new system, we would only be responsible for buying the, uh, the units. Uh, we, there would be no, uh, fee from the state for the usage, no maintenance fees, they take care of all the maintenance on it. And, uh, it would require all new radios and pagers. The good thing about this system is, uh, it works statewide, so no matter where a person is in the state, they can radio back to, uh, North Branford, that could come in handy, especially with, uh, say, the Fire Department, where the closest burn unit for somebody is in Bridgeport. And, uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure about the system they have now, but I would, I would imagine that they'd probably lose communication along the way somewhere, uh, where now they would have full communication along the whole route. With the plans to upgrade the, um, Police Department, I think, uh, it's probably a good time for them to be trying that system out and, and seeing how it works, because, uh, I would imagine you'd want to upgrade that one, when and if we did a new Police Department. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Uh, Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
Uh, no meeting.
All right, next is Town Planning Goals Subcommittee. Planning and Zoning Commission.
Uh, I was out of town, I wasn't able to make that, I think it was on December eleventh or December twelfth.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
Uh, meeting for tomorrow evening is canceled, and next meeting for that committee is February twelfth.
Corey, I just have a question. At the meeting that got canceled in December for us, there was gonna be some kind of a report from the committee, kind of updating us?
Yes, and, um, I, we're gonna do that. We're gonna, we had to postpone that.
Okay.
So, we're, it'll be coming, right, hopefully, we're gonna be ready to do that after the meeting on the twelfth. We are gonna be ready to do that after the meeting on the twelfth of February.
Okay.
Okay, next is Finance Subcommittee.
Uh, we met tonight before our regular meeting, and we met with the, um, representatives from the Volunteer Fire Department, and we are, um, talking about, uh, their pension and, um, the cost of their pension and moving forward, how we can devise something so that it's a better planning tool for us, for the council, in a budget session.
All right, thank you, Rose. Uh, next is Blight Subcommittee. Nothing. All right, we're gonna move into the Town Manager's Report. Update on, uh, Poco Festival Coordinator Position.
Yeah, I gave you a brief memo that, uh, work in progress, I'd met with the, uh, Rec Commission to go through that, um, deliberation with them, and favorable, uh, conversation in terms of coming out with a comfort level that they'd like to go back out into the market and look at, uh, a higher level rate, uh, that can be, uh, supported by the, uh, Poco Festival Fund at twenty-five an hour. And it's gonna be pretty tight to do, but, um, we're gonna try a couple of different places to advertise that we haven't advertised before, and hope that we can get, just get lucky and get somebody in there. So, I'm still working on that at this point.
Okay. Uh, Report on New Van for Senior Center.
Yeah, and, uh, another great, um, uh, program from the state allows us to participate and, and get, uh, a van replacement. Uh, I put some pictures in there, the new one, uh, and, uh, the old one was, uh, caught, you know, falling apart on us, and, uh, so this is a great program, and for a twelve thousand dollar match, uh, which will be later on in the, uh, in the, uh, agenda for contingency, uh, we're able to pick up, uh, a great new vehicle to service, uh, seniors and, and continue the program. So, it's already broken in and, uh, taken receipt of that, and it's, uh, working out well for us. And we're hoping that, uh, again, uh, for the council's, um, information, just looking to, uh, probably, uh, get another one, go through the same, uh, program, because the, the two that we have are, are mirror vans, so to speak. They came at the same time, both in eighty, you know, uh, same, same model year. Uh, so, one just had a little bit more miles, got tired before the other one did, but the other one is tired as well, so we're looking at that program again, and hope that we can, uh, pick up another one through that, that program.
Okay. Uh, next is Reading Through the Ages Program Recognition by American Association of School Librarians.
Yeah, just a quick, um, I thought it was a, a great, um, piece, um, of, uh, good press for, uh, the town in terms of being recognized, uh, through the association, which is National Association, and, uh, the good work that, uh, the school system coordinating with the town, with the library system, uh, getting recognition like that for a program. I just think it just, it, it kind of showcases, uh, the programs we're doing, and, and what a great community we have. So, I just wanted to throw that in there as a PR piece for the council.
Okay. Uh, next is Sustainable, is that Connecticut, C.T., uh, program introduction?
Yeah, this is, uh, an interesting, uh, program that, uh, many, uh, communities throughout Connecticut are, are working on, and, uh, there is local interest, uh, as you see in the memo from, from Roger Salway, working with, uh, the, um, uh, different volunteers within town on, um, uh, North Branford Proud and the Sunflower Project. Um, this, uh, organic kind of, um, growth, if you will, has come together, they're looking at, uh, doing more. And so, there's a program that, uh, the state has done, and, and CCM is promoting as well. Uh, and I think about a hun, I mean, half the town, forty-seven percent of the towns in Connecticut are already registered in this program. Doesn't cost anything for the town. Uh, I just wanted to give you some information, there's no action tonight, but, uh, what I'd like to do is, uh, gather additional information and present the program, uh, at the next meeting. All that's required of the town is, is a resolution, they have to have a formal resolution, uh, from the town in order to enter into, uh, the program, but move in a direction of trying to do, uh, different practices and institute different projects, uh, and practices, uh, in terms of sustaining or getting a, uh, designation as Sustainable Connecticut, and moving toward a goal, uh, being, uh, doing certain practices, uh, and projects.
Um, they did talk about this at the EDC meeting last night, and Roger had given an update. Um, because there's a three-year, it's retroactive for three years, so things that we have done would qualify, um, would go towards credit of becoming registered for this. And once you do, um, receive, um, certification and that you're approved on everything, um, that also allows you to qualify for additional, for funding mechanisms. And there are some, um, cities, um, and towns within the state that have actually benefited quite well from this program already. Um, so it is, it's a program that the EDC is endorsing and wants to move forward with.
And there's, yeah, and there's a group already, uh, ready to, um, take on this challenge, if you will. And, uh, there's supplemental information in the folder, uh, thanks to Bill Sebastiano, who had provided that, and it's in your folder. Uh, some other press clippings and articles that, uh, may help, uh, kind of give you a flavor for what's going on around the state.
Okay. All right, next is Standard and Poor's Rating Update.
Yeah, uh, more good news in terms of our, our bond rating, uh, is holding steady and, uh, solid at, at A.A. plus. And, um, obviously, um, we're always looking, uh, to explore opportunities in which to get an upgrade. Uh, very difficult to do, but we keep chipping away at that. And, uh, Anthony, uh, you know, is leading the, uh, the, the, the charge on that, and so, um, I think just wanted the council to be aware of that, that our, our rating is solid, rock solid.
That's good. Okay, next is Potential Fundraiser by Rotary Club for Splash, Splash Pad.
Yeah, so you have additional information in air, um, and this comes by way of, uh, Council Fawnin, and, uh, there is a letter, um, you should have both a letter and, uh, also a, um, outline, um, from some, uh, Stantec, uh, from Diane Papalizio, uh, in, with respect to their interest in, uh, working with the town and coordinating and fundraising for a splash park. And again, this is not for action, but more for informational purposes. And I know that the, uh, Rec Department has had, and, uh, and Sean and the Rec Commission, uh, interaction with the idea and the concept. I know it had come up, uh, I don't know how many, how long ago, but in, uh, in the context of a capital project, or some point, a year or two years ago, it came up, um, it's been discussed. Uh, I'm not sure, um, where the council wants to go. I would recommend that, I think this information is helpful and it's good to know. Uh, I just don't know at this point, um, what the scope is, uh, with respect to size, but I think it's something that the Rec Commission could, could wrestle with, and I would recommend that, uh, you know, that, that be referred, I guess, to Rec Commission for their deliberation and, and put more information together.
If, um, I can just interject, I was approached by Diane Papalizio, who's a town resident and a fairly prominent Realtor in, in town, uh, on behalf of the Rotary Club, they're interested in promoting, and I'm not really sure if they're intent on fully funding or raising the funds for this particular project, but they are certainly interested in spearheading it, and I think at some point, coming to the Town Council and making a formal presentation. What I suggested to her is that I give this preliminary information to the Town Council and ask Mike to solicit comment from the, uh, Rec Department and from Franny, uh, who I presume would have some burden if this was in fact installed, they're looking at the, uh, Stanley T. Williams site. And they are prepared to go forward, assuming there are, there's not a negative reaction. And really, I think that's, as opposed to approving anything, I think what they're really looking for is some indication that there's interest on the part of the town, and that it's not a, a problem for the town or any department.
Well, I, I just know this came up probably about a year and a half to two years ago, and I, I was at a number of the Park and Rec meetings where this came up. And, uh, a lot of the issue is, is there just was not enough information presented to Park and Rec, because ultimately, it's their decision if they want to go forward and make the recommendation to the Town Council, because this is going to have an ongoing cost to the town, obviously, with maintenance and everything. And, at the time, Park and Rec was not comfortable with making that decision without knowing the scope of the project and exactly, and that, and, and that's where Rotary did not come in with that type of information. But then they started advertising that they were raising money for a splash pad, which no one had approved yet, and I think that's where it kind of got stalled. So, so I, I would recommend that this, it is a Park and Rec Commission thing, because they're in charge of, that's their role as the commission of our parks and stuff, to investigate this further, get more information, and then pass their recommendation on to the council, um, at that, at the time that they feel they have enough information to give it to us.
Well, if it makes sense, then I'll just get back to Diane tomorrow and tell her to get in touch with, with Sean or, or with Mike, and put some specifics on the proposal and get them comfortable with it.
Yeah, 'cause they had a number of questions, I, I remember, from, like, a year and a half ago. And, and I don't, I think it's too early in the process for us to say, yes, we endorse this, go ahead and start fundraising, and, and without knowing a lot more specifics about it.
Yeah, I think we need to know the size and scope, and whether or not it, it, there's a feasibility, uh, in terms of placing it.
Correct, and, and then, ultimately, the cost that it's going to, I mean, if they're gonna pay a hundred percent of the initial cost, depending on the size of it, that, the maintenance on it, um, liability, I mean, there's just a lot of unanswered questions in regards to this.
New Britain had a smaller, um, splash pad, and they just either rebuilt it or put a new one. But maybe somebody could reach out to New Britain and just touch base with them, see what their initial cost was, what their maintenance is. I mean, you're gonna have water usage and everything else, filtration systems, so...
Can do that, there's a couple of towns, and I think it's referenced, Hammond's referenced in this letter as well.
Right, and Guilford's doing a fundraiser right now.
Oh, are they?
They're putting, their goal is to put one in down by Jones Beach.
Yeah, I'll be happy to coordinate with, uh, Rec and with, with Sean.
I just did work at, uh, the one in Milford last year that they just built, and there definitely is an expense to that maintenance. There's definitely a lot to a splash pad, it's not just a simple hose system squirting water up.
Right.
You know, we would definitely be, post a liability, there's definitely a liability there.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Community Events and Presentations. You have anything?
No, I, uh, no, no, I have none, but, uh, I, I also just wanted to add, um, for the next meeting, Lou's not here, uh, Council Paternoster not here, but I'd like to get a photo, we typically do the new council, um, we do a photo. So, um, I'd like to do that next, next meeting.
Okay.
Provided everybody's, everybody's here. That's all.
Okay, next is Citizen's Statements and Petitions and Correspondence.
Bill Sebastiano, uh, forty-three, uh, Sunnyside Drive. There's a little packet you got, uh, open above your, uh, tablet there, there's a half a dozen pages. Two or three of them are on the sustainability, and, uh, a couple more on the, uh, the RFP, the trash contract you'll be talking about later. And, uh, the two or three for the sustainability is, uh, just a couple of articles that are out of the newspaper more recently, and, uh, so I thought it'd be a good time, I'm on the hazardous committee, to give you, you know, we don't always get a chance to tell you what, what we do is, uh, is, uh, in reference to sustainability, it's obviously recycling and hazardous and the environment is a, is a big deal. Uh, right up front, everybody gets this card every year, and the information, hard on, on all the dates, and basically, that's the, the big changes, our dates every year. And, uh, and, uh, besides that, the Totaka Times, it's, is our way of getting, you know, uh, the more current dates, you know, coming up to you. And more recently, since we, uh, we're down on the two, two bulky ways a year, uh, if you noticed that ad, we've got, uh, every, uh, every couple of weeks, there's a couple of, uh, little articles, uh, little places where you can go, uh, if you've got, uh, a bulky waste situation, in other, in other words, an alternator. So, every week you're gonna, or bi-weekly, you'll see a couple of different ones. Uh, it could be Goodwill, it could be, uh, Vietnam Veterans, it could be anything. So, that's just something, uh, again, we're, we're doing as part of the committee. Simple Recycling got off the ground in November. Uh, at our first meeting in the end of, uh, uh, second week of December, we got a check from, uh, Simple Recycling, you know, it's only twenty dollars a ton, we got a check for fifty dollars. That's, that's, uh, two and a half tons in three weeks' time, it's pretty good. Something right off the bat. Other things we do, we, for two years, we did, uh, Earth Day initiatives. Unfortunately, uh, first year wasn't too, uh, popular, and the second year, uh, we got sort of rained out. But, again, it's all part of, uh, sustainability. And, uh, next big thing is, uh, electronic waste. Because none of these cost us any money, really, except for the info card, because it has to be printed, it has to be mailed out. But three times a year, we do, at Public Works, we, on Saturday mornings for three hours, we do electronic waste. And we get the reports, obviously, we're there to greet the town residents when they come in. And believe it or not, I've worked most of them, on the, on the three years I've been on the committee, and we get from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty cars that come in there with something. A lot of TV sets coming in, they fill up two, uh, you know, those big state body trucks there, you know? Tow motors and everything, that's quite a day, quite a, quite a day. And along with the, uh, e-waste now, uh, you might have heard, uh, we've been talking about mattress recycling. Uh, there's a statewide effort, in fact, there's only a few states in the country that do it. Every time you buy a mattress now, you pay an extra six, seven bucks. And that goes towards this statewide effort about recycling that mattress, so you're, you're paying it ahead. And we had, uh, in November, uh, at the e-waste event, we, people were allowed to bring their mattresses also. And, uh, the, uh, the person from that, uh, council, or mattress council, was, had a truck there. Uh, because everything happened fast then, so word didn't get around, but we got fifteen or twenty mattresses that didn't go in the dumpster and are in the landfill. Of course, we get, you know, this is one of the big things we pay for, is the hazardous committee got a long off drive, the regional, the region thing, costs us big bucks every year. But, uh, uh, you know, our town residents can bring all the, the liquid stuff, the things that are hazardous, they can bring them there. And I mentioned recycling, the biggest thing is the, and this is more for the, uh, the newer members on the board, you know, if you know about, we have a plastic film and recycling program. We have eight locations around town, the libraries, uh, the senior center, a couple of markets, country paint. And believe it or not, there's a picture in your folder there, that was taken the first year. I come on that about halfway through two thousand seventeen, that's when it started. And they ended up picking up a ton and a half, thirty-two hundred pounds worth of soft plastic in two thousand seventeen. And the next year, it's forty-six hundred pounds. And if you see the bags there, I took a picture that, it was averaging six ten-pound bags that first year, and then it went up to like nine ten-pound bags. That's like four hundred and fifty bags that we send along to Big Y. Those bags are about three quarters of my size and double this weight. And four hundred and fifty bags, I bet you'd fill this room. So, that's three years in a row, it's, that's how much has been taken out of, uh, the environment. And the other thing was about the, the RFP coming up, you'll be talking about it later, but, uh, just a couple, again, a couple of articles about what's, that I've seen in the paper about what's new in trash contracting. Of course, we know there's a, and a graph in there, how the forces all turn around. So, it'll be interesting what you say in reference to that, thank you.
Bill, wasn't there an incentive for the plastic?
Oh, yeah, well, just like it's, have you got the picture there?
No, I, I, but I remember last time, last year, you, you mentioned that, you had a bench.
Yeah, well, that's Hank, Hank was the one that, uh, Hank was the one that actually got that program started like three years ago. Yeah, every five hundred pounds within a six-month period, you earn a bench. Uh, obviously, we do four or five hundred pounds, that's it. So, we've got six or seven benches, you know, two years, it, one year gets two, two benches, so three years, we got six, and we got, and the next one is coming, for sure.
Where do they put those, in the parks or something?
No, they're actually, uh, see, the, if you see the, uh, the boxes around town, like the senior centers, if, there's a tally sheet behind it. So, Hank, again, he tallies them up to see who earned that bench. The person, the, the location that brought in the most weight earned- The person, the, the location that brought in the most weight earns the bench. But eventually, all the locations will get one, you know, get one down the road.
So those benches are made out of that recycled?
Yes, the composite stuff. In fact, Hank, if anybody watches social media, there was a little, I don't want to call it a cartoon, but, it's a thing that the Trex people put out in reference, you know, it's a simple, how they, how they process the thing. It's on social media under Hank's name, is a little video, but it's always helpful. Most of, even in the last, last spring, I started going to Guilford Fence here. You know, all this white, or stretchy plastic stuff they wrap boats with? Well, the fence people had the, when they buy their vinyl fencing, they had that same product. And since last summer, I think we pulled a couple hundred pounds out of there, just, just the rat, that's overrat, that's what they wrapped the product.
Where could you go if you had a bunch of it? Because I heat my house primarily with wood pellets, so I have a ton of bags all the time.
Yeah.
And I was using those, but they were full all the time, so I gave up on it. Is there a place where you can go if you have a lot of it?
We take the wood pellets, again, the wood pellet bags. Northford Store, two libraries.
No, but they were, the, the containers that you, you put out are too small. I get, I probably go through two, three bags a day.
Oh, you know where the, the containers are?
Yeah, so, but every time I would go.
Oh, just put it next to it, you know, because we pick it up two or three times a week. Even if it's too much for the box, they don't, yeah, we will be there, a couple of times a week we pick it up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, in accordance with Section 10-4 of the Charter of the Town of North Branford, I hereby disclose to the Town Council that I have a financial interest that requires disclosure by virtue of my employment with the North Branford Board of Education. I hereby request that the Town Council record this disclosure upon the official record of its meeting.
Hi, Walter Godev, I do the same thing. In accordance with Section 10-4 of the Charter of the Town of North Branford, I hereby disclose to the Town Council that I have financial interest that requires disclosure by virtue of prior contracts between my company, Classic Welding, and the Town of North Branford. At this moment, no active contracts exist. I hereby request that the Town Council record this disclosure upon the official record of, of its meeting.
Thank you, I, thank you. Next is resignations and appointments. First one is appointment of Councilor Lou Paternoster as liaison to Board of Education. I'll need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
This is just to clarify, we had three liaisons to the Board of Education, and there was, so Marie and I are still liaisons to the Board of Education, this fills that third position. Thank you.
Okay, any, made, made by?
I made the motion, Joe, second.
Joe seconded, uh-huh. Mr. Fawnin seconded. Any discussion? No. Roll call.
Mayor Big Leo.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Goad.
Yes.
Councilor Pletia.
Yes.
Okay, the next appointment is of Jennifer Ash to Parks and Rec Commission. The date on that is wrong.
Expires 12/31/22.
12/31/22.
I make, I make the motion.
I'll second it.
So the term on that one is 12/31/22.
Michelle, the motion was made by Rose and seconded by Mike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Big Leo.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Goad.
Yes.
And Councilor Pletia.
Yes.
Okay, next, the appointment is of Craig Miller to the Parks and Rec Commission with a term to expire 12/31/2021.
So moved.
Second.
Michelle, Marie and, okay, and Joe. Uh, any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Big Leo.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Goad.
Yes.
Councilor Pletia.
Yes.
Uh, next is reappearance of Richard Simmons to the Police Commission with a term to expire on 12/31/2022.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, Marie and, and Joe, I guess. Uh, any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Big Leo.
I'm going to abstain.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Goad.
Yes.
Councilor Pletia.
Yes.
Okay, the next reappearance of William Goldensy to Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire 5/31/2022.
So moved.
Second.
Marie and, and Joe. Uh, any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Big Leo.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Goad.
Yes.
Councilor Pletia.
Yes.
Next is reappearance of Donna Persley to the Solid Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee with a term to expire 12/31/2020.
So moved.
Second.
Marie and, and, and Mr. Fawnin. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Big Leo.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Goad.
Yes.
Councilor Pletia.
Yes.
Next is reappearance of Carolyn Candeloro from Board of Ed to Pension Committee with a term to expire on 12/1/2021.
I'll move that.
Second.
Mike and Rose. Uh, discussion. Nothing, roll call.
Mayor Big Leo.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Goad.
Yes.
And Councilor Pletia.
Yes.
Next is appointment of Elizabeth Sienna from Board of Ed to Pension Committee as an alternate with a term to expire 12/1/2021.
So moved.
Second.
Rose and Mike. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Big Leo.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Goad.
Yes.
And Councilor Pletia.
Yes.
All right, next is appointment of Lou Paternoster to the Police, North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
There's a correction, that should be as an alternate.
Alternate.
I make, oh, I make the motion.
Second.
Marie made a motion to Mr. Fawnin.
I seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Big Leo.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Goad.
Yes.
And Councilor Pletia.
Yes.
Next, we have the resignation of Chris Kranick from Economic Development Commission.
This is.
Set that on record.
Okay, next is unfinished business, discussion in action, future budget planning initiative.
Uh, no items at this time.
Okay. Update on I-44 to Otucket Road remediation.
Um, no real changes the last time, there's, basically the work is essentially done. Um, there's a dumpster with a debris that has to be removed, that's, that's part of it. And there's some, a lot of construction vehicles that have to be removed from the site. I believe the Town Attorney is talking to the applicant's attorney and just trying to resolve that part of it. So hopefully it'll be back somewhere in the near future.
Yeah, yes, Council and I spoke earlier today to work on just bringing this matter to a conclusion. It's my understanding what's left is the removal of this heavy equipment, some dumpsters, and then a concern, because of the time of year, that any seed that was put down may not grow, so it may need to be reseeded later in the spring. Uh, and there is agreement to address those three issues. Uh, there is a need on the part of the property owner to refinance his property, so he is going to be seeking a satisfaction of the judgment. I believe we are substantially completed with respect to satisfying the, the terms of the judgment, and we can address, and I also believe, Kurt, I'm going to ask you if you can check tomorrow to see if the dumpsters have been removed, because I'm told they are, that through a side letter agreement, we might be able to address the removal of the heavier equipment and the seed, and move toward the release of the judgment, so the property owner can refinance his property. Uh, but we'll wait to see that there's substantial completion, and we'll report back at your next meeting.
Okay, next is update on bond refunding opportunity.
As we discussed a couple of meetings ago, we had an opportunity to refinance some of the bonds that were issued in 2011. The initial estimate that I put in my memo was around $204,000 of potential savings. Uh, when the transaction actually happened, the savings are closer to $230,000, $31,000 over the years. The schedule identifies the years of the savings, and some, including this current fiscal year, about $65,000 will be saved in this current fiscal year. So total overall savings, $230,000 compared to the 2004 that we originally had estimated. So it was favorable. I did ask about the question about the fees, and what I was told was that if the deal, and Mark shared with me that never in his all of years doing it has it actually been pulled out at the last minute. But if it was pulled out, typically, they would not charge us him nor the bond counsel. Uh, they would probably include it on subsequent sales, they would make up their, their fees at that point. The rating agency, once it goes to committee, and a committee is convened to update our rating, as you saw earlier, there would be a charge for that. So that'd be the only one that we really would incur if they had to pull the plug at the last minute, because the market went against us. Uh, those other bigger ticket items would not be billed to us at that time, they'd be on our account, basically. We'd be billed when we did the next sale, so.
So it's not like it's.
Free.
Free.
It's just deferred.
You pay for it.
You pay for it.
So where does this, because we didn't budget for this, for this fiscal year, this savings? So where does this money, this $65,000, go?
You'll have a savings on the debt service line in the budget.
Okay, so it'll just be less?
Be less, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move into new business discussion in action. Quarterly report from East Shore District Health Department.
Yes, you have a report from the Director, Mike Pascasilla, and Mike is here tonight to kind of walk through the highlights and answer any questions you may have.
Good evening. So you should have an outline of the quarterly report and also our full annual report. Given you've probably taken a look at this, right, I'm just going to hit the highlights and then if you have any questions for me. So as a matter of background, because I know there's a few new members, the East Shore District Health Department has been serving the town of North Branford since 1974. We're a full-service, full-time, comprehensive local health department. And we do more than just your traditional environmental or local health department services. While we do offer, you know, the health inspections, well, septics, environmental sampling, we also have a full-time public health nursing, and we've done a number of clinics here in the town of North Branford. Uh, we have an opioid prevention program that we offer. We have a home visiting service where we work with families in need and public health education. And, and one of the things that we've been doing is we've been surveying, surveying our customers to find out, you know, what do we need to do to enhance our customer service? And so what we have found is we're doing more online applications, we're taking online payments now. We're able to do some limited email transactions with some of the B-100s and plans for, for our customers. And we're seeking national public health accreditation, we'll be one of a few health departments here in Connecticut. We've submitted our application and analysis process over the next six months. And we've been planning and doing this for the last almost five years. Again, the rest of the report is, is just some of the numbers and some of the services that we have offered for the last three months in town, and so with that, I'll open up to any questions that you may have for me.
I know in the past, there's been some issues with you being able to be fully staffed, and that has created some backlog and longer wait times for things. How is that situation?
Okay, so right now, we do have two vacancies, but what we've done in the meantime is we have some part-time employees. Uh, so on the environmental health side, there is a union. And we, we're on an extension of a union contract, and we're going through union negotiations. And so the agreement that we have is we have three part-time inspectors and two full-time inspectors. Um, and we have, we have posted for two full-time inspectors. Uh, so right now, our, our customer service needs are being met, and we're hoping over the next few months to fill those vacancies. But, you know, anyone who's gone through union negotiations know it's just not a simple process. Um, there's, you know, legal fees and there's lots of negotiations. Uh, what we're trying to do, like most folks that have a, a union contract, is some of the benefits, we're scaling back on some of the benefits with pensions and things like that. So we're just trying to bring it back to what we're seeing across the state, similar to what the state has done and, and the town of North Branford.
Okay, thank you. So has the online helped in that situation in being able to move things along?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah, more and more customers, and even some of our, our return customers, like realtors and installers are starting to use the online service. Now, one of the things that we do have planned is to get, to digitize all our records and put them online. Uh, the problem with that is about $50,000. Um, and so we're looking at how we can, how we can do that, and so we've, we've done some of it already in-house, but in order to take it to the next step, there's a certain software, it needs a little more thought. Uh, and we're looking for a grant, there are some grants available to make. And we're looking for a grant, there are some grants available that may offset some of those costs, but that's the, that's the long-term goal. More and more people are using online services everywhere, and that's where we see ourselves. There are times when we get somewhere, at one time, we were getting close to 700 to 800 customers in one month. And that's been significantly reduced, because people can do it either online or through a phone call. So, yes, it's working.
Okay, good.
Can recall the last time you were here, you had some backlog because additional requirements were put on you in regards to some FDA regulations. I recall that, I was just wondering how that worked out.
Yeah, so Connecticut adopted the Food and Drug Administration FDA Food Code. However, it has not been implemented yet, the state has not been able to move it forward, and there's still some work to be done. So we're using, like all health departments around the state, the old code until the new code becomes law, which it looks like it may be postponed until about next year at this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, how are you dealing with the flu season? Where are we, if you can speak to that? Is it worse this season?
So we were gearing up for a worse-than-normal flu season. What we do is we follow the trends down south and see how they progress up north. And while we're, while cases are coming in, it's not, it's not been as bad as we expected. It could change, but as of right now, it's, you know, about an average flu season year. We haven't seen a lot of fatalities or hospitalizations, but we have, we've had some.
On the radio today, they said there's a new strain coming out, so it's moving into the state, so we may see a resurgence.
Yeah, it may, yeah.
For people to ask, is it too late to get a flu shot, or is it not?
No, it's not, it's not too late, in fact, we're still giving the flu shots out. The sooner you get it, the better you'll be protected, because it does take a few weeks after you get the shot to get the immunity. But, you know, definitely, it's, it seems like the formula this year is better than formulas in the past. But, you know, to your point, there are some new strains out there, and we don't know what lies ahead. In the next couple of weeks, everything I just said could be, could change.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is review and approval of bid specifications for the solid waste and recycling contract.
First question is, has the town attorney looked at this?
Several times.
Okay.
The second question is, are there a lot of changes from the previous contract?
From, I mean, the previous RFP? I did not, I only reviewed what they gave me, I did not compare it against what the prior one was. So I don't want to make an assumption that Michelle based it off of the prior one, because I know we did have some changes in it, but it did not seem extraordinary. So it seemed, I tried to catch a lot of the things that I've heard you complain about in the past to try to just.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking about.
Well, I did see there's add alternates for going back to once a month for bulk pickup, which is great, or once a quarter. We're currently at the twice a year, so that's, I, that was nice to see that in there as alternates.
Yeah, I think some of the changes were in an effort to make this more flexible for us, and it did go through a pretty good review. I know, I think Bill had mentioned it through the, through the committee. I know they discussed it, and Michelle took a lot of notes, they were very helpful in helping to refine this document, so.
Okay, I just, and these are minor corrections, is under Appendix A, under field and playground locations, they have listed Northford Intermediate School, which has, that has not been around, the name was changed. So that is Totaka, I believe that should be Totaka Valley Elementary School, because that's what Northford Intermediate School became. And then my other question was on, I guess on the pickups, and they indicated how often certain locations get, it's Appendix G, which is page 109 on our tablets, is why does Fire Company One, Company One get daily pickup, and all the other ones are just weekly? I mean, they're all volunteer, I don't know that it makes a big difference, but I was just wondering why there isn't consistency between the firehouses? Since, you know, they're all volunteer, and they're not, no one's living at them, why wouldn't they be the same?
I gotta look into that, I don't know that.
So those were the, those were the two things that I noticed in going over this, if anyone else has anything. So I take it we're looking to get this for the next fiscal year, 2021, that's why we're going out now?
That's why, yeah, trying to get out early, to try and get a number back, help us with the budget process, right? Yep.
Okay.
I'd be seeking a motion to approve the spec tonight, and if that's the will of the council, then it'll go out, we'll get it out on the street.
Do you have a number on this? What's this RFP?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I see something on there, since I was part of the.
Sure, come on up.
When did you just say, I thought we started or go out for?
Oh, we haven't, I'm just saying, I was just saying that if the council approves the bid spec tonight, we try and get it prepared to get it out and advertise it on the street.
And you're looking to.
For July first? For July 1st.
Yeah, that's my point here, we have an option for another year.
We do, so if we don't like it, we don't have to do it, we don't have to go.
I think the way that it stands now, we know what it's gonna cost, right? $550,000, plus we're getting, the big thing is we're getting free recyclables for another year. Now, you don't know that with any of these other contractors you're gonna pick up. Whereas if three contractors bid on it, they're gonna be, you're gonna be talking about like, again, like with Johns.
Well, we would still have the free for a year.
That was given to the town, that was given to the company.
Not to the hall, to the town.
I understand that.
So we would still have, so if we go out to bid, and it's cheaper for next year, and we accept whoever it's with, we still have the one year of.
Okay, yeah, well, the other point is, I left you a couple of articles in the paper, and do you still really want to go for, with the what's going on with, you know, trash contract? It's page one, isn't it still five years? Five-year contract?
The initial one is five years.
Yeah. Again, according to the couple of articles I gave you, you know, these contracts, I would guess, I'm not an expert by any means, that maybe they don't want to be tied down, or we don't want to be tied down for five years. Maybe let's look at something a year or two at a time, till that market straightens out, and then everybody gets a better idea what their course is. No, not for nothing, I speak for myself on that, but the night we did review that, we brought a couple of errors there. We were, that was a 25 days there, and we tried, we tried to, I was overwhelmed trying to read through it all in half-hours time there, but six or eight of us there, but I'm sure we overlooked a couple of things on it. Even like, there's a clause in there for, a company would have to get insurance for like $300,000 for carrying hazardous waste, I think there's a grammar error in there. But, I mean, they don't carry hazardous waste, right? Not people bring it down to.
Well, you don't know that, I mean, someone could.
They don't know what they're carrying sometimes.
Yeah, someone could put something in their garbage that is not supposed to be in there, they don't know it, we don't know it, so that protects everyone.
I actually think $300,000 is probably too low, with the cost of stuff like that.
Anyway, just sit down, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Bill. Is that a solid five-year contract, or is it like a two- or three-year contract with, where we have options for the last two years?
The first is five years solid.
Okay.
Then there's two add-ons.
Two, two-year.
I mean, it brings up a good point with the, with the price, the opening's expensive enough, that drops back down.
The reason we, the reason we did five years was because the first year we bought totes, so that was included in the contract. The totes were part of that five-year contract, I believe.
When we, when we initially went to it, this is, you know, it was to recoup, it was for the contractor, whoever got it on the first.
That's the current contract, right?
Right.
I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the new one that we're putting out, is that for a five-year contract?
It is. It is.
Do we want to consider shortening that up because of the cost of the waste? If halfway through that, the cost of the waste, for whatever reason, goes down, we're still paying a higher price, do we want to lock in for that one? Just throwing it out there.
If it goes up, I can't, I can't foresee.
Yeah, but then you could have an option.
I can't foresee it going down.
You could do a two-year with a three, you know, with a three-year additional option, or three with a two, just a suggestion.
Couldn't we throw in there something similar to what we had in this last one, whereas we had it for two years, but we have the option to bid it, you know, go out to bid?
You're spinning, you're spinning that, that ball, you know? You don't, you don't know.
You gotta get people to bid on whatever you put out on the street.
Right.
And what is the incentive to bid for a two-year or five-years if you have to get out in two years? You know, so you're disincentivizing potentially your market. And just for the record, the contract, the RFP provides a million-dollar coverage for hazardous waste.
Okay.
No, $300,000. So, you know, but yes, you can, you can modify it, but I think the point of, when we modified the arrangement with Johns to a two-year, we wanted to have this first year to go out on an RFP, not necessarily to award it, but to see what the market was going to do. So this is your opportunity to go out and see what the market's doing. If it comes back, I think as Rose Ray said, if you don't like it, you have another year. So you don't know what the market's gonna be a year from now, but at least you get a preliminary review this year.
Well, and I think part of that was in doing this current two-year contract and us being able to go out a year in, was because it was in the ninth hour that he came to us and said, as of this date, I'm not gonna do it anymore. And our backs were kind of up against the wall on that to try and get something done, so that was a compromise that we were able to reach, that we could, we would do a contract with them, but have the option of, because we didn't have time to put an RFP together, put it out there, and award something in less than 60 days, and that's, that's the timeframe that we were looking at. So that's why we're able to do it now, that was part of the compromise on this.
I would think with the contractors bidding five years, they would give their best price to wanting to get that five-year contract. And we'd probably be safest with a five-year, because then we know what it's gonna cost us for the next five years. That make sense?
Yeah.
It's a safer.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Plus it's an equipment thing too, you're asking for pretty, you know, new equipment, so someone's gonna be putting money out of their pocket for.
Trunks.
If it's a new contractor.
Definitely get a better price of five years versus one or two, definitely.
And in the past, we've had it where the contracts are, they, like year one and two, the price was the same, and then they went up in year three, and then they held it for two years, so it's, it's been working out for us. I know the market has changed greatly in the last year and a half with the recycling, and that is what prompted the action that happened earlier this year on that. I would like to make a motion to approve the bid specs for RFP number one, 2020-2021 for solid waste and recycling contract.
Second.
Rose, Rose made the motion, Michael seconded it, seconded it, any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zanpiano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Fornin?
Yes.
Council Code?
Yes.
Council Felicia?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into review and approval of bid specifications for contractors' equipment rental by Department of Public Works.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid specs for bid number 15-2019-20, contractors' equipment rental.
Second.
Michelle, did you get it? Rose made the motion?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Oh, discussion?
Can I ask, Franny, what do you think of it?
Yeah?
Yeah, that's a bid I put together for, that covers all our, you know, like tree removal stuff and snow removal, other contractors that we use throughout the year, instead of trying to get bids every time you have a project, you have a, it's kind of like a blanket, where all the contractors bid on what they have, so if we have a snowstorm run up coming up next week, let's say a major one, then we can hire them off that period. And it's kind of working out very well, so, otherwise we have to do all sorts of, you know, all northern peaks, and so this year it clarifies it all, if you keep it in place.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zanpiano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Fornin?
Yes.
Council Code?
Yes.
And Council Felicia?
Yes.
All right, next is review and approval of bid specifications for masonry repairs to North Bradford Auditorium and Intermediate School.
I'll move bid number 14, 2019-2020, technical specifications, masonry repairs to North Bradford Auditorium and North Bradford Intermediate School.
Second.
Mike made the motion, Rose seconded it. Any discussion?
Well, I just want to make sure that, because I'm not in the field, this field, and I know we had gotten the estimate from Frank Capasso a few months ago, and Al Rose had said that it was pretty detailed, and we should be able to write bid specs off of that. I mean, we're talking a lot of money here, so I just want to make sure that.
That's what we did.
Our bid specs and did.
And we did for, we used a, or Bill, I should say, Bill Chody had gotten a professional on the auditorium side, and worked and reviewed through both spec, and rather than doing it separately, put them together, figured that we'd get a company, because of, you know, scope and size and scale of the project, to put these two together, but we used both generated from Capasso and, I can't remember the other gentleman.
I think Capasso did the other one too.
Capasso did.
The auditorium, that was the first one that we did, I think Capasso did that, right?
That's the first one, yeah.
Yeah.
We do the school, the new brick and the school at the same time.
Okay, so, so the Board of Education has also. So, so the Board of Education has also reviewed this document?
With respect to, uh, Bill Chody, yeah. I don't know beyond Bill, uh, who's.
As long as they had input.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And the only other thing that I want to say about this is that since this has come out, I, I've noticed that NVIS has a new sign on their building. It's pretty large and illuminated. Um, and it's right in the area of the new brick that we have to do. Which, um, I just don't understand why that's there right now, knowing that we were going to do this project. So I, I think that we need to put something in this bid document that the Board of Education is responsible for removing the sign prior to the work and having it reinstalled afterwards. I don't think it's fair to whoever bids on this, because that sign was not there and I don't know why it's there now, knowing that this work had to be done, um, on there. So I think something has to go in here that, that's their responsibility.
Maybe when they take it down, they can switch the letters too.
Well, that's, they could, I mean, that's up to them.
Okay, where are we here?
So the motion was made, seconded, and we just want that.
You did this discussion?
Right.
Yeah, with the.
Anything else?
With, with Rose's clarification and we'll write that into the spec of the Board of Education's responsibility and or whoever they, if they want to give it to the company to take it down.
So it's the illuminated NB sign to be specific. Because there is, North Branford Intermediate School is in letter that has been up there, but it's the NB illuminated sign that we're talking about.
BN sign?
Or the BN.
BN.
The BN sign that was recently installed that's illuminated?
Yeah, right.
I don't go that way anymore, so I haven't seen it back there.
On, on social media, they got the, um, numbers, the letters backwards.
Oh. I'm not on social media, so I'm still sane.
Yeah, why should we pay?
Yeah.
Oh, you all set? Uh, roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zanpiano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Thonan?
Yes.
Councilor Code?
Yes.
And Councilor Felicia?
Yes.
All right, next is review and approval of pension committee recommendation.
Yes, at the December meeting of the Pension Committee, Becky Seelman, our actuary, presented to the Pension Committee some changes that she had recommended as pertains to the three defined benefit plans, uh, police plan, town plan, and fire, uh, plan. One is that there is the creation of a new mortality table, which got her all excited, uh, as an actuary. Public, one designed for public sector employees, that they determined somehow that the lifespan of public sector employees differs from non-public sector employees. So that's public sector ten, twenty-ten mortality table. She suggests that we implement that across all three plans. Uh, the second is the amount of the increase that she factors in on an annual basis for the police compensation. Currently, she's using a four-and-a-half percent annual increase in their compensation, which sounds astronomical, but factor in that the fact that it's not only their salary increases, but they have extra duty and other things that add on to it. So the three-and-a-half percent is a more realistic number that she would like to use in the actuarial evaluation going forward. This had no impact on their benefits whatsoever, just for actuarial purposes. But because they're both identified and referenced in the plans, it's considered a plan change. And only that can make plan changes is the town council based on recommendation from the Pension Committee. Pension Committee has endorsed both of these changes, just for you guys to, uh, to act on.
Are there factors that could change those, though, in terms of the market and whatever? That, that something would be set in stone?
The.
The changes percentages?
Yes, when you make the change, it, it changes the plan. And then when she uses up new changes to calculate the actual valuation, finalize the numbers that will happen for next year's pension, uh, costs for the town. She hasn't finalized them yet pending the outcome of implementation of these two changes. So she needs these to finalize the valuation, which will result in the defined contribution, uh, defined benefit number that Rose referenced earlier, that the town always puts in. We don't have that number yet until she gets these, uh, changes implemented.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council, pursuant to the action of the Pension Committee, votes to, one, change the actuarial assumption of annual salary increases for police officers from four-point-five percent to three-point-five percent, and two, implement the pub dash twenty-ten mortality tables for all three defined benefit pension plans for actuarial valuation purposes.
Second.
Motion, motion made by Councilor Angeloni? And seconded by Mr. Thonan? Is that you, Chody? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zanpiano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Thonan?
Yes.
Councilor Code?
Yes.
Councilor Felicia?
Yes.
Next is confirmation of recreation supervisor.
Yeah, that's that we tabled that and then come back to it after the executive session.
Okay. Uh, next would be contingency appropriations.
Two items before you this month. Uh, the first, as the town manager referenced earlier, we had the opportunity to pick up a senior van of roughly twelve thousand dollars towards the, I think it was a sixty-dollar, thousand-dollar roughly, uh, van, come out of contingency. And the second is, recall, there was some significant HVAC repairs at Smith Library. Those bills have been totaled and the total is eleven thousand, two seventy-five, uh, plus or minus. So that these two items took them out of our contingency, uh, pocket for the nineteen-twenty fiscal year.
I'll move that.
Second.
Motion, motion by, uh, Councilman Duty and seconded by Angeloni, Rose Angeloni. Uh, discussion. Nothing, roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zanpiano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Thonan?
Yes.
Councilor Code?
Yes.
And Councilor Felicia?
Yes.
Next is financial report.
I wasn't, I wasn't thinking. Financial report for, uh, this is November, it's a month behind, obviously, due to the cancellation in December. Uh, again, nothing, nothing crazy to report. The top-line property taxes, fifty-four percent last year, fifty-three-point-six this year, right about on target. Overall revenues, again, it's nothing significant, no departments are over-expended as of that point in time. Overall expenditures appear to be higher, but again, looks like it's mainly in the Board of Education line. That line is, is higher than last year. Aside from that, there's no, no, nothing significant report, remains unremarkable as of, uh, November.
Thank you. Next is tax refunds.
So moved. Second.
All right, uh. Next I have town council meeting for. Oh, I'm sorry, uh. You made, you made the motion?
I did.
Uh, Rose made the motion.
I reseconded.
Yeah, we reseconded it. Uh, discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zanpiano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Thonan?
Yes.
Councilor Code?
Yes.
And Councilor Felicia?
Yes.
Oh, uh, this next. This next thing I had, uh, I asked Michael to put on here on our agenda, town council meeting format. Uh, it has to do with, I talked to, uh, Attorney Marino about three weeks ago. And it has to do with, uh, the way we run our meetings. I guess there's other towns that do things different. Uh, we, we, there is, it's possible that we can maybe streamline our meetings a little bit uh, by, by making some changes. And I, I'd like to have you, uh, listen to him and see what he has to say about this, if you don't mind. Certainly, Mr. Marino, you have the floor.
Thank you. So you, uh, the mayor asked me to take a look at, uh, your meetings and see if, uh, what you're doing at your meeting was absolutely required, uh, and whether or not there were things that you could do to try to streamline it, to try to, uh, kind of come to meetings, get to your business, and get out of your meetings without, uh, delaying unnecessarily. Uh, and I, I think you have the ability as, as a, uh, as a body to control your, uh, your meeting agenda, uh, but you are subject to adopted rules. So you would have to amend your rules to, uh, modify your meeting schedule because your meeting format is laid out in section nine of your rules, which sets forth the order of business, which, uh, requires, for example, one of the things the mayor and I had spoken, spoke about is the reports, uh, each meeting. It's so twice a month, that section is eating up a certain amount of time. It might be five minutes, it might be twenty minutes, depending upon what's going on. Uh, but it does, uh, sometimes interrupt flow. So is that something for an area where you might be able to streamline it by either doing away with it or doing it once a month instead of twice a month? The, for purposes of, uh, uh, the agendas should probably, uh, uh, be more, uh, changeable. For example, the Blight Committee Subcommittee, uh, there's no longer any action being taken, but we still have it on the agenda, and it's still being kind of called. So that, that, maybe that should fall off the agenda naturally? Or are you going to be disbanding that, uh, committee now that it's a matter that is before the body and something for your consideration? So, uh, you can change the format any which way the body would agree, but it would have to be by way of a vote to amend the ordinances. The last time your, uh, body's rules were changed were December fourteenth, nineteen ninety-nine. So, uh, it doesn't mean the way you're doing it is wrong, it just means, uh, you can change them if you would like. And you're all, uh, to the extent, uh, you're a liaison, uh, on a commission or a board, you are really the eyes and ears of this body with respect to that business. And that's the reason, I think, for the report back is so that the body at large has an understanding as to what's going on on the other boards and commissions. Uh, but again, that might be something that you might be able to, uh, do once a month instead of twice a month. And, uh, there was a recommendation, I won't take credit, uh, that, uh, maybe it's best not to do it on the WPCA night because you have additional business that night, that's WPCA. So if you were going to streamline it to once a month, do it on the non-WPCA night. And so you'd have two different, uh, meeting formats. So that is, that is one area. The other, other thing to point out, again, to the extent we don't abide by the rules all the time, which is fine, uh, your rules do set forth, uh, for example, on citizen statements, there is a limit of five minutes per speaker. We don't often time people, uh, but something to be aware of. And, uh, let's see. That, that is, for purposes of modification, I, I think I saw the reports as the area that is most, uh, ripe for discussion. For purposes of the, uh, appointments, uh, the appointments are the appointments, resignations. You're really not acting on resignations. So I don't know if there's a need necessarily for that to be part of your agenda per se, or if it's just on there as an FYI, that so-and-so has resigned. Because you're not accepting your resignation, you don't, you don't have to, you can't reject the resignation. So you, but you do have to make the appointment. So, uh, that might be another area where resignations might drop to simply an FYI section that's not necessarily a discussion item, uh, it's just for your information.
Attorney Marino?
Yes.
I don't know if it falls under that, that same piece, but I know when we did the training, we talked about, uh, not having to do a full roll call every time? Kind of do like the eyes take it on certain matters, um, and then more pressing matters, do a full roll call?
You can do that. You can, there's no, no requirement that, uh, you, uh, do a roll call. Obviously, the, the, the function of the roll call is to get everyone's vote recorded, so no one can hide from their vote. Uh, but if it's unanimous, presumptively, the vote, you know, the votes will be recorded as unanimous. So, uh, that is another way, but again, you know, seconds add to minutes, minutes add to hours. So every time you can save a couple of minutes here and there, you try to help the public be as informed as you can, but try not to keep people here into the wee hours of the night, if you can avoid it. So, uh, things like, things like this, uh, like the roll call, you're probably saving the minimus amounts of time. But again, it's on every single roll call, it, it might be a thirty-second exercise. So, you know, it could be five, ten minutes of savings in, in, in a meeting, which is not insignificant. So, uh, but it's really, what is the pleasure of the body? This is, this is your meeting, this is your, the way you've been doing it. There's nothing wrong with the way you're doing it. But, you know, the mayor, uh, thought it might help matters to, uh, move things along instead of just meeting for meeting's sake, I believe, was, was the second.
Mm-hmm.
You know, on a related matter, it's not the procedure and the council, but something when you made that presentation, that training, that kind of caught my eye. Thought about it is the idea of having, having, um, town email addresses rather than our own, because you spent a lot of time talking about, um, you know, the importance of email and that somebody could FYI, FOI them, et cetera. Is that something else that we should be considering while we're talking about procedures of the, of the town council? I know it's not quite related to meetings, but I remember, I, I thought about that after your training. And I was wondering if that's something else that we should be considering.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it is technologically available, uh, I would re, I would recommend it as a preferred, uh, use, uh, rather than your personal email, because I hate when we get an FOI request and I have to reach out to everyone. You have a Gmail account, they have a Hotmail account. And in order to really respond to the FOI requests accurately, I have to do a, do a review. I mean, oftentimes, you know, it's, it's, I like to be able to just ask people and, uh, but I do have to make a presentation that I reviewed everything. So if it were, if we're on the town server, it would be easier for me to get, get that information because I could go to one source for all information rather than going to nine or ten sources for, uh, information.
Anthony, how hard would that be?
Uh, well, we currently have maxed out our email, I guess we can certainly buy more, because it's not, not the end of the world. I gave the numbers for you. You want nine, or you want ten, or eight, or?
I, uh, I like mine.
I would assume you should go ahead and give us a proposal to streamline the, uh, procedure?
Okay.
Give us a proposed.
Yeah, I could, I could agree with, uh, you know, moving the, uh, boards and committee reports to, you know, the second month, the second meeting of the month. I can't agree with, um, roll calls. I think the vote should count. And the vote should be stated.
Why don't we consider making roll calls mandatory if any member of the council so requests them? To be done by roll call rather than I and they?
Or how about anytime it's not unanimously? You know what I mean? Do it, you know, the I, you know, all in favor, and if anybody says no, then we, then we say, okay, let's go to a roll call.
That's fine.
I like that.
Because a lot of this stuff's unanimous.
Well, you know, like approving the minutes.
Yeah.
Usually appointments.
Yeah.
And stuff are all.
Appointments, I mean, that is, that is a sleeper.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of you putting together a proposal, so at least we can look at it.
Same.
And review it in that sense.
Right. Can you do that?
Yeah, uh, let me, uh, I'll be here tomorrow, I'll sit with the town manager and, and discuss format, and maybe even some type of like, uh, almost like a consent calendar for your appointments, uh, where, you know. where, you know, we can set something up where if there's general approval, you're kind of doing it all at once rather than going one to the one to the one to the one to the one, which, again, it is sometimes, by the time I catch up, you're fourteen sections ahead because I passed out. So, I agree with that. So, but, so when we report back at your next meeting?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Marino. So, citizens, next to citizens, is everybody all set?
Yeah.
Discussion. All right. Citizen statements and petitions.
I'm Potter.
Northford.
Line Ointment. I'm old-school. I like the idea, as long as you all agree, but we, you work for us. We wanna see how that we got you here now, how you're gonna handle our business. The roll calls, you know, we can see if you're tending to agree with us or tending to not agree with us. It's just a common courtesy, you know, and to go with the eye and everybody's happy, fine, but after that, I'd like to see who's voting which way and why, and down the road, that might make a big difference. It's just the formality, you're right, but it's who we've elected and how they vote. Simple, old-school. Thank you.
Thanks, bud. Okay, next, we'll move into executive session. Do I need a, a vote on this, a veto as well?
Yeah, we'll make, we'll make a motion to move in executive session under CGS one-dash-two-hundred-six-A for Recreation Supervisor and Executive Session Strategy and Negotiation Regarding Water Pollution Control Authority Contract.
So, we have to include-
Regional Water Authority.
We have to include certain people.
Yes. Town manager.
Town engineer.
Town engineer.
Yeah, we're gonna have to break it, though, because we got, we got the candidate first, and then then WPCA.
I only have one executive session.
No, it's the, under WPCA, there was an executive session.
Not mine.
So, we'll do, we'll do executive session, we'll do the Recreation Supervisor first?
Yeah, I think it may, to me, I would recommend we make sense if we go an executive session on Recreation Supervisor, then come out and go, and go back into WPCA, just kind of separate.
Yeah.
What was the second?